Good evening, everyone. First of all, colleagues, I'd like to wish you and the members of the public watching a Happy New Year and welcome to the first meeting of South Tyneside Borough Council for 2022. I am first required to inform you that this meeting is being recorded. As you can see, we have returned to Temple Park to manage the risks of the Omicron variant to protect elected members, officers and members of the public. As one of the government's recommended behaviours and actions, I would ask all elected members, staff and members of the public attending today to wear a face covering unless you are exempt from doing so. Toilet facilities are in the corridor just outside the main hall. If the fire alarm sounds, please leave the room by the emergency exit doors to my left and make your way to the main car park. Staff will assist with this. Please limit disturbances whenever possible and ensure mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent during the meeting. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones provided. Each desk is equipped with an individual microphone and some simple instructions on how to operate it. To ensure the sound system is effective, members must switch on their microphones using the central button when speaking and ensure they are close enough to the microphone when speaking and that they speak directly into it. In the interests of sound quality, I would ask that a councillor remains seated if speaking. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by raising their hand and being invited to speak. All other councillors must remain silent whilst another member is speaking. As per the council procedure rules, if the chair stands during any debate at full council, any councillor speaking at that time must stop immediately and the meeting must be silent. Voting will be managed by the monitoring officer and strategy and democracy officers minuting this meeting. If an item does not appear to be contentious, members will be asked whether any member disagrees or wishes to abstain. In the situation where there is any dissenting voice, a vote will be taken. If an item requires a vote, the monitoring officer will ask for a show of hands or will read out the names of each member in alphabetical order and ask them how they wish to vote if required. The monitoring officer will record the outcome of any voting and announce it at the meeting. Can I also take this opportunity to remind members that the code of conduct applies to this meeting? We should always demonstrate good conduct. We all have a collective responsibility to live up to the standards expected of us as councillors and community leaders. A councillor who speaks will not accuse anyone of improper motives or use offensive language or expressions. Members are reminded that our meeting today will deal only with the business that is set out on the summons. I will now ask each member to confirm their attendance by undertaking a roll call and ask all participating members to reply present. I have received apologies from councillor Boyack, Dick, Heatherington, Milburn, Peacock, Punction and Wildhurt. Are any other members aware of any other apologies? Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Apologies for councillor strike, she's poorly at the moment.
Thanks councillor Bell. Councillor Thompson?
Madam Mayor, I don't think you mentioned councillor Forster.
No, I didn't. Thank you for that councillor Thompson. Anyone else? Yes, sorry.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, councillor Jim Sewell.
And Jim Sewell, thank you. We'll now go through the roll call. Councillor Amor?
Present.
Councillor Atkinson?
Present.
Councillor Bell?
Present.
Councillor Barclay?
Present.
Councillor Best?
Present.
Councillor Brady?
Chair, can I just, I'll try to mention that he wasn't attending this evening because his car's broken.
So we'll have apologies from councillor Brady, thank you. Councillor Bristow?
Present.
Councillor Dean?
Present.
Councillor Dix?
Present.
Councillor Dixon?
Present.
Councillor Donaldson? Councillor Duncan? Councillor Ellison?
Present.
Councillor Flynn?
Present.
Councillor Foreman? Councillor Francis?
Present.
Councillor Gibson? Councillor Hamilton?
Present.
Councillor Huntley?
Present.
Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kennedy?
Present.
Councillor Kilgauer?
Present.
Councillor Leesk? Councillor Malcolm? Councillor N Maxwell? Councillor N E Maxwell? Councillor McCabe?
Present.
Councillor McHugh?
Present.
Councillor Melling? Councillor Porthouse?
Present.
Councillor Potts?
Present.
Councillor Proudlock? Councillor Purvis?
Present.
Councillor Roberts?
Present.
Councillor Sewell? Apologies, sorry. Councillor Smith?
Present.
Councillor Stonehouse?
Present.
Councillor Taylor?
Present.
Councillor Thompson?
Present.
Councillor Traynor?
Present.
Councillor A Walsh?
Present.
Councillor M Walsh?
Present.
And councillor West, we have councillor J Wel, sorry.
Present.
Thank you councillor Welsh. The first item of business is declarations of interest. No declarations of interest have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make a declaration of interest before we move on to the next item of business?
Madam Mayor?
Councillor Welsh?
Yeah, on item seven, I'm on the council's constitution committee.
Thank you. Councillor Malcolm?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. Declaring a prejudicial interest as chair of South Tyneside Homes regarding agenda eight, I have been granted dispensation. I will remain in the meeting and vote on the subject matter. Also, subject seven, a member of the constitution committee.
Thank you councillor Malcolm. Councillor Taylor?
I'd like to declare an interest as I'm chair of adult and child safeguarding on item seven on the agenda. Also, I'd like to declare my interest as a director on the board of South Tyneside Homes in respect of item eight. This is a personal interest only and not a disclosable pecuniary interest. Therefore, I am able to stay in this meeting of the council, participate in the discussion and participate in any vote taken on the matter. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Taylor. Councillor Flynn?
Yeah, Chair, declaring interest in item four as vice chair of the pension fund and item seven as a member of the constitution committee.
Thank you councillor Kilgauer.
Item seven, Madam Mayor, I'm a member of the constitution committee, thank you.
Thank you councillor Walsh.
Declaring interest on item four, I'm chair of the pensions committee, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Dixon?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I actually am part of the constitution committee, I don't know if it is relevant to declare interest, but if it is the need, Chair, I'm actually on the constitution committee.
Is there anyone else? Councillor Thompson?
Thank you. Personal interest on motion one as chairman of the Friends of the Redhead Park and a trustee for the Friends of Harton Cemetery and also a member of the constitution for item seven.
Thank you. I would also like to declare an interest because it's my position is may I also sit on the constitution committee. Thank you.
Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Chair. Sorry, it's councillor Atkinson, yes. I also sit on the constitution committee, I don't believe there's a conflict of interest, but everyone else has declared, so I will.
Can I just say, colleagues, I've just been informed by my legal adviser that nobody needs to declare an interest who sits on the constitution committee. Okay, thank you. We move on to item two on the council agenda. The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 25th of November 2021. Are they accepted as a true record?
Madam Mayor?
Yes councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would just like a bit of information if I could, please. At the last meeting, I was asked to leave the meeting because I was allegedly have said something that nobody heard and nobody seen and it was seconded by councillor Purvis, who after me had made remarks about councillor Hamilton. But yet I was told to leave the meeting, but there was no vote on her. Has this Labour group got double standards, please? Because you cannot be asking one to leave and not another.
Councillor Roberts, can I just say, we're just asking for confirmation of the minutes as a true record?
Well, no, they're false.
I'm sorry?
They're false because the last minutes here has got councillor Kilgauer accusing me of doing something which I didn't do and there's no proof, nobody's seen anything and nobody heard anything.
Right.
So they're false.
Right, the minutes provided that councillor Kilgauer did propose a motion to remove you from the meeting, that this was seconded and agreed by the meeting and that you did leave the meeting. Do you have a comment as to the accuracy of this, which you've just stated you do have? You're saying the minutes are false? Would you like any clarification included in the minutes to recognise that there was no decision made at the meeting as to whether you did or did not mouth an offensive word to councillor Kilgauer?
I would like to see the proof, Madam Mayor, because there's no proof and nobody heard anything and nobody's seen anything, nobody. So, like I said, I've got double standards here because I was asked to leave the meeting with no proof and nobody's seen anything or heard anything, but yet councillor Purvis made remarks which were heard about councillor Hamilton.
Councillor Roberts, this is not up for discussion today, okay?
So people can say things about you, but you cannot defend yourself, is that what you're saying? So that is double standards with this Labour group? Thank you, that's all I need to know, thank you.
I don't know councillor Roberts, what you don't comprehend about what I've just read out. You know, I give everybody, every councillor in this council chamber, well, it's not council chamber, we're in Temple Park, but every councillor the opportunity to speak and I think I'm fair at doing that.
I'm agreeing with you 100%. You have given us the opportunity to speak and I've just put my point across that this Labour group have got double standards and it's not right you should have one rule for one and one for somebody else. Thank you.
We will add the clarification to the minutes councillor. You're more than welcome. Councillor Hamilton?
It's just an amendment to the minutes, I did make a similar motion to councillor Kilgauer and that hasn't been recorded, I'd like that to be added into the minutes.
Thank you councillor Kilgauer.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to confirm that indeed there are a number of witnesses and that this-
I can't hear you councillor Kilgauer, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry Madam Mayor, that there are a number of witnesses and actually this matter is with police and I don't think that this should be discussed, thank you.
It's not for debate councillor Kilgauer by anyone in this chamber, the minutes are there for clarification only and I think I've made that perfectly clear in my opening statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. False accusations by somebody.
Councillor? Just one moment councillor, because I'm going to say something now. Every member who is an elected representative of this Borough Council signs up to the code of conduct. I pointed that out at the beginning of this meeting and I don't get councillor, what you do not comprehend about that and I'm sure, you know, you need to sit and think about what you're saying.
Madam Mayor, I've sat and thought about what I've been saying, 100%, false allegations, you're coming out now and saying that there was witnesses, but nobody had a hand up last week at the last meeting, nobody confirmed anything, thank you.
Thank you for that councillor, but just remember the code of conduct, please. Councillor Huntley?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I was just going to ask to move progress, please.
We will move progress now, thank you councillor Huntley. Okay, fine. The next item of business is item three on the agenda, which is the mayor's announcements. Colleague, I don't have any announcements to make at today's meeting. Item four, to consider a report on the treasury management mid-year review as of the 30th of September 2021. The next item of business is to consider a report of the director of business and resources on the treasury management, which I've just said. I will ask councillor Joanne Bell to formally move the report, councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Chartered Institute of Public Finance and Accountancy Code of Practice on Treasury Management requires council to receive a mid-year report on treasury management. This report covers the period from the 1st of April 2021 to the 30th of September 2021. The period saw the economy continue to grow, albeit growth is still below pre-COVID levels. During this period, six new borrowings were arranged through the Public Works Loan Board totaling £30 million. There were maturities totaling £15 million which were repaid. The report notes that the activity during the period was controlled within the treasury and prudential limits as set in the treasury management strategy and the activity is being delivered within the budget expectations. Council are therefore recommended to note this report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell, is that seconded? Thank you councillor Atkinson. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have to express a growing concern with our crippling level of debt. A level of debt that would shame some UK city authorities. With Public Works Loan Board fixed rate borrowing, bank loans and private finance initiative liabilities, we as a council are well over £700 million in debt, with annual debt repayments exceeding £20 million. This level of debt is going to rise under this group's administration. Quoting this report today from the lead member for resources, there is likely to be high levels of volatility and unpredictability in respect of PWLB rates, which should provide good opportunities to borrow at attractive rates. So more debt to come, attractive rates or not, this is debt. And we are already borrowing at over 90% of our capabilities. We are without doubt in the danger zone. As mentioned, in our annual budget, over £20 million a year is spent on debt repayments. With a budget of around £130 million, this is an estimated 17% of our financial resources every year to repay debt. I worry the word billion will be mentioned in future treasury reports. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Bell, do you wish to respond?
Thank you Chair, unfortunately there was no questions actually attached to that, but the comments that councillor Thompson has made have been noted, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, mine is just a question. I'd just like clarification on what the six new borrowing arrangements are, what each one was for and how much each one was for. I don't expect you to give it to me now, I understand you may not have those figures to hand. And also what the three that were paid off, I think it said three that were paid off, what they were originally for and if they were paid off, if they were due to be paid off or if for some reason they've been paid off early or late. Thank you.
Councillor Bell? Obviously, the actual loans that are taken are not for any specific item. We have a massive programme, a capital programme moving forward, so they're actually pooled, they're not for individual things, but I will get councillor Hamilton a response as to her question regarding the loans that were taken out and those that were repaid.
Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to those involved in the preparation of the report. An unenviable task, I'm sure, this year in particular. Just a couple of questions, in section 32 of the report, it says, and I quote, "In order to maintain the required level of debt to meet the capital financing requirement for 2021/22, some external borrowing was needed." And I wondered if we could get some specifics on what the numbers are there. And then the second question, moving on to section 37, tells us that the housing revenue account is currently under financed by 8.3 million. And on checking the equivalent report from 2021, I noticed that at the same stage last year, the HRA was under financed by 5.3 million versus this year's 8.3. So the question is, should we be concerned by that and what measures are in place to address that gap and prevent it from continuing to rise?
Thank you councillor Francis. Councillor Bell?
Chair, as previously, those comments have been taken on board and councillor Francis will receive a comprehensive answer to his questions regarding part 32 and part 37.
Thank you councillor Bell. Is the report noted? Thank you. We now move on to item five. The next item of business is to consider a report of the director of business and resources to approve the 2022/23 council tax support scheme. I will ask councillor Bell to formally move the report, councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report considers the local council tax support scheme for 2022/23. Since 2013, the National Council Tax Benefit Scheme has been replaced with a support scheme determined locally by each individual council. The scheme is intended to support those on lower incomes by reducing the level of council tax due. In introducing the scheme, linked government funding was immediately cut and was further reduced for many years thereafter. The council is proposing minor revisions to its existing support scheme to maintain consistency with some changes to national welfare benefits. Residents with disabilities and those with young children will still retain more protection under the scheme. The scheme has been designed to remain affordable within the resources available, given the potential for increases in claimant numbers, a financial risk which falls upon the council. Alternative options may be considered for future years beyond 22/23, such as a bandit scheme, which a number of authorities are now adopting. This would need very careful consideration due to the significant changes required in computer systems and associated administration. The attached council tax reduction scheme is commended for adoption by the council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell, is that seconded? Thank you councillor Dixon. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Stonehouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the report. My concern is for the residents living on benefits and fixed income, those who struggle to pay household bills, like single parents, care leavers to mention a few. The council tax support scheme means that up to £150 hardship relief can be borrowed against a 21/22 council tax bill. So how can these residents juggle the debt along with the rest? My question is, does South Tyneside council still charge claimants of council tax 30% when many other councils charge between 0 and 10%?
Thank you councillor Stonehouse. Councillor Bell, would you like to respond?
Thank you, I'm a bit confused by the question, I'm not sure what the 30% actually relates to, but obviously this council is still continuing to pay a council tax support scheme and this report is to actually continue to do that. I will speak to councillor Stonehouse to find out exactly what this entails and will ensure that she gets a response. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Is the report noted? Thank you. We now move on to item six on the agenda. The next item of business is to consider a report of the director of business and resources on the appointment of an external auditor. I will ask councillor Bell to formally move the report, councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report considers options for the appointment of the council's external auditors from 2023/24. Our current external auditors were appointed by the Public Sector Audit Appointments, an independent body established by the local government association. Going forward, the council can either appoint its own external auditors following a legally compliant procurement process or continue to opt into the Public Sector Audit Appointments process. The majority of councils nationally use public sector audit appointments to select their external auditors when the scheme started and are expected to continue to use this scheme going forward. The report recommends that the council approve signing up to the public sector audit appointments for 2023/24 in order to achieve the many benefits set out in the body of the report.
Thank you councillor Bell, is that seconded? Thank you councillor Dix. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just very quickly, fully welcome the recommendations in the report. We've seen what happens on a national level when public bodies have a hand in selecting their own investigators with regard to other matters and we've seen the fully understandable loss of public confidence that arises from that. And so aside from any extra work that might be involved in a separate procurement process, it seems absolutely right to use the PSAA in order for us to be seen to select the most objective and impartial option in the interest of thorough scrutiny and maintaining public confidence. So I welcome the recommendation in the report.
Thank you councillor Francis. Is the report agreed and do council approve joining the public sector audit appointments limited? Thank you, that is agreed. Item seven is to consider a report of the director of governance and corporate affairs on in-year amendments to the council's constitution. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report, councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Following the meetings of full council in July, September and October and November of last year, there were a number of matters that have been agreed and decided upon by full council, needed to be reflected within the council's constitution. full council, needed to be reflected within the council's constitution. There were also a number of amendments to the constitution that were necessary following the appointment of the council's chief executive, Jonathan Chu, and his updated senior team structure. These amendments have been made to the constitution and the most up-to-date and current version of the council's constitution is now version five, dated December 2021. The constitution forms the cornerstone of effective corporate governance, and colleagues will agree that it is important for the good governance of the council that we seek to keep the constitution up to date in order to reflect current circumstances. Madam Mayor, I move the report.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Dix. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the report noted? Thank you. The report is noted. Item eight, the next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Regeneration and Environment on the council's emergency response and recovery work following Storm Arwen. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members will recall the impact Storm Arwen had on the borough when it hit overnight on the twenty-sixth of November last year. Properties and vehicles were damaged, trees abrooded, and a number of our residents and businesses were left without power. This report outlines the response from council teams and also some of our partners and contractors in delivering the initial response and the ongoing recovery. Council will note the exceptionally high number of reports that were required in the response. Thanks to some pre-planning, key services were able to mobilise immediately, prioritising responses on a risk-based priority approach. This ensured as far as possible our key infrastructure was largely able to remain open. Risks from fallen or damaged trees were actioned and necessary closures as a result of dangerous or seriously damaged structures were implemented. As mentioned earlier, some of our residents and businesses were left without power, as it became apparent from some of those who were being relocated with families and friends and that the power outrages were literally to a number of days. Council officers supported by colleagues from South Tyneside Homes undertook a number of welfare checks on residents and where necessary, supported them into alternative accommodation. Officers also joined calls through the local resilience forum to understand the regional picture and where possible to coordinate responses. The communication team worked to ensure both internal and external messages were regularly updated to keep everybody informed. I would like to reassure council that officers have already met to review the response, understand what went well and develop any key areas that we could improve. Madam Mayor, I'm sure council would like to join me in thanking our partners, contractors and all council officers who provided an excellent response to ensure the safety and wellbeing of our residents in such difficult times. And Madam Mayor, I would also like to say a personal thanks to our elected members who, over that weekend, were out supporting our residents and our businesses. Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Dix. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Bristow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everyone involved in the planning and execution of the council's exemplary response to Storm Arwen. But just one quick question. As the report states, as work is ongoing, we don't have an overall cost for the recovery operation, but I understand this will be paid through what's referred to in the report as contingency budgets. I take that to mean our strategic reserve, which is required to be maintained at no less than two percent of the council's net budget. With extreme weather events like Storm Arwen expected to become more frequent, would the council be willing to look at increasing the strategic reserve to ensure that we're able to ensure that we're financially prepared to continue to respond effectively? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I really couldn't hear any of that.
Sorry.
Right. You're asked if, I've just been told, you're asked if we could increase our contingency budgets. Is that correct? Right. I'm sure that the lead member will come back to you on that. Okay.
Yeah, just a comment, Madam Mayor. I think from a council's perspective, we are a caring council and we will do whatever we can to support our residents and businesses in time of need such as the recent events in November, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dixon. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to repeat, thanks to the council teams, contractors and partners for the impressive response to the storm. Response and the situational awareness reports, which were crucial to myself and I'm sure to all elected members. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Is the report noted? Thank you, colleagues. The next business is to receive questions under Procedure Rule Eight. No questions have been received under this rule. Item ten, the next item of business is to deal with petitions received under the council's Procedure Rule Nine. No petitions have been received under this rule. May I also advise that no petitions were submitted to our October meeting. There are no update actions to report back to full council today. We move on to item eleven. The next business is to receive motions under Procedure Rule Ten. Two motions ought to be considered under this rule today. I will explain the procedure for the motions. I will ask the proposer of each motion to move the motion and he or she may speak up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconder may speak up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion that will then be open to debate by the members, who may each speak up to three minutes and may move amendments. Motion one has been submitted by councillors Wildhurst, Forster, Milburn, Roberts, Kennedy and Thompson. Councillor Thompson, I understand you are going to present this motion on South Tyneside Parks to full council. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'll present this motion on behalf of councillor Wildhurst. The parks in South Tyneside are generally of a high standard thanks to council officers and contractors. Also key are the volunteers who lend a hand in their regular upkeep and maintenance. As human beings, we all have a genetic tendency to seek connections with other living things and health studies show that contact with nature, with plants, with animals and pleasant surroundings offer a range of health benefits. Many of our parks have tennis courts, bowling greens, children's play areas, but I believe that parks should become a place of destination, places that are high on people's minds to visit, places to regularly spend time, meet other people, make new friends. We have many lonely people out there. Loneliness is countered by interaction and the pandemic has highlighted the need for us to promote more interaction in a safer environment. The safest place to meet and interact is, of course, in the open air, in our parks and in our open spaces. Our parks in South Tyneside should be developed as community hubs, attracting a cross-section of society and ages with appropriate facilities. How do we achieve this utopian image? Key to this is provision of further facilities. Many of our parks, as mentioned, have fantastic facilities such as tennis, children's play areas, lawn bowling, but we should be imaginative about additional facilities, facilities that allow not only participation but the option to comfortably sit and just watch. What better for a lonely person than to come and watch an activity, potentially meeting new friends? We need to further encourage fitness classes in our parks, the likes of yoga and pilates, whilst providing facilities for these types of groups. Ultimately, through innovation, park usage would increase, as would the health and quality of life of so many. I think since the pandemic, most, if not all of us, have taken another look at our parks and open spaces and revalued them. Councillor Wildhurst and the signatories of this motion want to further that re-evaluation of our parks and open spaces in bringing proposals and debate to the chamber. Of course, councillor Wildhurst, in his own words, says, "How do we achieve this utopian image?" Firstly, it's as a council that we accept the importance of all our parks and open spaces, not simply the foreshore parks. And secondly, that we act on this as best we can. I have to applaud our council's recent activities in this area with the South Tyneside Council Parks Open Spaces and Semataries Volunteer Charter. This initiative, which brings support, knowledge, finance and structure to any friends group who wants to engage and partner with our council, is a significant step towards councillor Wildhurst's utopian image. I would encourage that any volunteer friends groups we have in the borough participate in this initiative. All of our parks and open spaces belong to us all, to benefit us all. Our council are the custodians and volunteer groups working to a common goal together, hand in hand with council, is without doubt the way forward and actually the only way to realise those common goals. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Is the motion seconded?
I'll second the motion.
Councillor Kennedy, do you wish to speak?
I'll reserve the right, thank you.
Thank you. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to speak, ask a question or move an amendment? Councillor Gibson?
Speak, please. Thank you. I expect councillor Wildhurst tonight, so I'll still follow the same procedure. Seems pretty loud, the speaker. I noticed councillor Wildhurst cited Harvard University in his motion. Can I start off by saying that Harvard is a very different place to South Tyneside and it's very different in demographics and culture and challenges? Indeed, even within South Tyneside, the wants and needs in areas are different from those in different parts of the borough. Certainly, it isn't up to someone from Harvard to tell us here in South Shields what we should do, because one size doesn't fit all. Despite being a small borough, we have twenty-four parks that I believe should be very proud of indeed, as councillors have stated, as the councillor stated, in the very high standard of the parks throughout the borough, in the work the council does and the officers do, in the dedication of local residents and volunteers and friends groups. The councillor mentioned the pandemic. It should be noted that the results of the pandemic in our parks have never been so busy. Indeed, we kept our parks open throughout COVID-19. When not all did, we did. We recognised the importance of open space and green space through the pandemic. He also mentioned loneliness in reaction with others. The councillor may have seen or may not have seen happy to chat benches, which the leader of the council, the leadership, introduced right across the borough town centres to improve health and wellbeing and reduce loneliness. Councillor Wildhurst, in his motion here, goes on to mention things like chests and bowls, and these may be well in some parts of the borough, but indeed, in the sunny climate of America, it might be, you know, it might be his kind of thing there. South Tyneside Council always listens to its residents and friends groups and operates within the parks to provide the best possible facilities they can and activities. Taking each councillor's points in turn, identify one park meant activities. As I have said, we are constantly engaging and consulting with our residents and groups and activities in infrastructure within our parks. Our groups tell us what they want, giant chess pieces, then, if they want them, we'll look at them, see if we can provide them, if that makes them happy. But we aren't just going to give somebody something just for necessarily giving them it. Something will simply act as a target for antisocial behaviour or vandalism we wouldn't provide. In relation to funding, does councillor Wildhurst not realise that we already do this very successfully across the borough? He will have no doubt noticed our recently multimillion pound investment in North Marine Park, which was funded by the Heritage Lottery. Our friends groups have also been successful in attracting funding, which, of course, would not be in such high demand had it not been for the current Tory cuts in the first place, which was afflicted upon the borough by the Conservative Party.
Councillor, your three minutes are nearly up.
Furthermore, one of our groups signed up, one of our members who signed this petition tonight, signed up to the council's partnership. They were provided with two thousand pound in the severies. And I've got to congratulate a number of people and congratulate a number of parks within the borough. Do you know we've actually got three green flags in this area? Did councillor Wildhurst know that? But also, we're very proud of, we've got the Queen's Award in heaven. Councillor Ellison attends that area. Fantastic news, and it was fantastic for the borough that we achieved this. So I don't think councillor Wildhurst is really taking things on board. In the motion, he also stated regularly engagement to users of the park, how to understand and how to attract them in new ways at looking at improvement. We're doing that all the time. Consulting with friend groups in public, a range of officers have a role within the community engagement officers. Within parks, I can name two straight away. As part of the recent project, North Marine Park consulted with residents and key project holders and key holders. What they wanted, they wanted outside gym, outside gym facilities, playing areas, communal gardens. They got what they asked for because they worked with people and they consulted with the residents. In addition to this, the implementation has the potentials of valuable areas been taken up, but we must consult with residents and elected members before we do this.
Councillor, your three minutes are up. Councillor Gibson?
Sorry?
Your three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was hoping to propose an amendment to this motion. Should I read the amendment first and then speak on it?
Yes.
Yeah. So the amendment would be to remove the text following "this council resolves" and replace it with the following. So this council resolves to present an audit of all parks in the borough, including information on active friends of groups, children's playground equipment, outdoor exercise facilities, dog exercise areas, sports clubs and facilities, including bowling greens and tennis courts, organised activities such as fitness classes where this information is easily available, accessible seating and accessible play equipment, defibrillators and levels of biodiversity in each park and any schemes to promote this, such as wildflower meadows or deliberately uncultivated areas. And then, secondly, to identify from the above audit which parks, if any, would most benefit from further support and intervention to improve access and facilities. And thirdly, to support elected members and residents in forming or reinvigorating friends of groups for any parks that currently lack an active group, in order to a) ensure that local residents and park users have a voice to help shape the provision available in their local parks and b) access funding to improve facilities, either through South Tyneside Council, community area forums or through external funding pots that might not be available to the local authority. That's the end of the proposed amendment. If I could then move on to speak on it, I'd like to start by sending best wishes to councillor Wildhurst, who is unable to attend tonight, and thank him for bringing the motion to council. I'm sure that all of us here want the same thing here. We want our borough's parks to be as good as possible, to serve the needs of residents and to contribute to our borough's health, wellbeing and biodiversity. And indeed, it would look strange to members of the public for us to vote against a motion that's intending to achieve those outcomes. And so, I'm sure colleagues will share my support for what appears to be the intention of the motion. Having spoken to councillor Wildhurst, I've proposed what I can... Having spoken to councillor Wildhurst, I've proposed what I consider to be a friendly amendment, which I believe will help us achieve those objectives for the borough's parks. And as councillor Gibson's pointed out, lots of this is already happening. And, you know, I could give several examples of accessible play areas, dog parks, exercise equipment, outdoor gyms, defibrillators, fitness classes, yoga, this, that and the other. So we know a lot of this is already happening. Just to go through the original resolutions, and I'll try to do this really quickly. In terms of identifying one park, I would be keen, and the reason for the wording of the amendment is to make sure that if we do identify a particular park, it's with reference to, you know, the provision across the borough and making sure that that goes where it's needed most, if anywhere. In terms of seeking funding, it's making sure that we can work in partnership with the friends of groups. As I say, they can sometimes access funding that might be difficult for local authorities to access. I think there's probably some logistical challenges in monitoring visitor numbers accurately, so my amendment's taken that part out. And, you know, the, the key thing really is consulting with park users to shape provision. As councillor Gibson says, it would, you know, it's not up to us to decide what a particular area needs, it's for the people who use that park and the people who live in that, in that local area to shape the provision and make their voice heard. I know that happens in, in a lot of places already through the friends of groups. And then finally, the fifth, the fifth resolution in the original motion is again kind of covered in the amendment with a view to making things accessible for people with impaired mobility. So, you know, just to reiterate, I'm sure we and the residents all want the same things and we share the same aspirations for parks and green spaces. I hope the amendment provides, you know, avoids some of the potential challenges that might arise from the original motion and provides a clear way forward and I hope people feel able to support the amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Hamilton?
Yeah, I don't know.
Just one second, councillor Hamilton, we just need to ensure that the amendment has been seconded before I allow you to speak.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Is the amendment seconded? Councillor Bristow seconded the amendment. Now, if any members wish to speak on the amendment, councillor Hamilton?
Thank you. It is the amendment I wanted to speak on. When I first read the motion itself, I was very concerned, I have to say, about identifying at least one park that would need, that we would put facilities into, because I thought, well, why would we identify one park? We would surely look at what parks needed resources. So when I saw the amendment tonight, it's the first time I've seen it, I didn't actually know who it was from. I looked at it and I thought, actually, I quite like that idea. And one of the reasons I like the idea of the audit, and this is, for me, is really important, is if we've done an audit of the parks and the equipment that's available in the parks, we could use that to plot that out on the website so that the public could see what parks had what different facilities and were available there, so they could make an informed decision about which parks to visit. And that's not just for residents, but for anybody who's visiting the town. Obviously tourism's quite an important part of the economy in the town, so if somebody can look on the website and see where, for example, there's outdoor exercise facilities or they can walk their dog, that would be a really useful tool, I think, for promoting the facilities that we have in the borough. So I'm just saying that I would like to support the amendment because I think that idea of the audit could be used in a number of ways that would be really beneficial to both residents, visitors to the town and to the council as a whole.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. Councillor Thompson? I'm sorry, sorry councillor Thompson, I've missed somebody. It's difficult to see when you're sitting up here. Councillor Forman?
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. I've listened to the motion and what's been said by Ernest. I'm really sorry that Ernest hadn't given the time to finish, because he was very, very close to finishing his his dissertation on what we already have. And I think, listening to the amendment as well, I think people have got to realise that the majority of stuff that's been put in the, in the amendment, we already do, you know, we, we already, there's a formalisation of the friends groups, which is in, which has specifically nominated officers to do this and they specifically look at what is in the parks and what is needed in the parks. And they have in the past and will in the future liaises with residents who are the key to everything that we should be doing in the parks. So I, I just think that from my point of view, we're going around the houses here because if we're doing everything in the parks, why do we need this motion and why do we need the amendment? I just think, honestly, I think principally we're wasting officers' times if everything has been done in the first place. So, Madam Mayor, I just think that from my point of view, I'll be voting against the motion and against the amendment.
Thank you, councillor Forman. Councillor McCabe?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, good evening, colleagues. I think this is a slate on the council workforce and the, the council officers. You know, it's up to the discretion of the mayor, she can allow the, the speaker to speak after three minutes, but, you know, like Jim Forman has just said, you know, there was something there that Ernest was trying to, to get over, that we already are extensively and comprehensively doing what is in the motions, both the amendment and the original motion. You know, and the variation on, on parks is so vast. I would, I would wonder if every colleague in here knows the following fact about Heaven Park. Can anybody tell me about Heaven Park? Heaven Park was donated to the people of heaven at the conclusion of World War One. The Carl Ellison family, which owned substantial property in heaven, were so overjoyed to have their son back, who had served with people from heaven, that they gave the park to the people of heaven. And I'm going to give an, a welcome and an invitation now to the opposition. Every year, we have a summer festival in the, in Heaven Park, where local, the local community and the residents come, come to Heaven Park and they throw wet sponges at councillors. So I'm inviting you all now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCabe. I'm sure you'll get some uptake on that. Councillor Best?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I had hoped to speak to the original motion, but this really applies to both. If I could just comment that in terms of the, the park spaces, and as councillor McCabe's just alluded to, a lot of them were given over to the people by kind donations in the past. I think we need to be mindful that whatever developments are made in our borough's parks are proportionate to the size and scale and purpose of the parks. In terms of overdevelopment, a lot of people visit our parks for a place of solitude and quiet. If they don't have a garden of their own and they live in a busy street or on a busy road, they may want silence and solitude and a little bit of green space where, that, you know, that there's just somewhere to breathe and, and have a think. And also the wildlife aspect of it, if we overdevelop our parks, the wildlife might not have the quiet spaces that they need to flourish and to thrive. So I think whatever we decide tonight, whatever we do in the future, and I welcome councillor Forman and councillor Gibson's comments about what's already being done, because I do believe we're already doing an excellent job in, in managing the parks. But whatever we do in the future, I think we've got to be mindful that not everyone is a person who wants dynamic activities in our parks. Not everyone is a member of our parks groups, they might just want to go somewhere peaceful and quiet and we need to retain developments in proportion to the parks themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Best. Councillor Atkinson, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with, in particular councillor Best's points, but I'd like to add to that. I think, and I'm sure councillor Gibson would say this, the investment that we've put in supporting people to work in our parks through the Friends organisation, through the handbook, through the dedicated office that we have working with friends, shows our real, as a council, our real value that we, that we feel, you know, we believe in our parks. We, many members, many members work very closely with those friends groups. If they're not in the friends groups, they work very closely and make themselves available. And also, they make themselves available to the residents who use the parks, which is very important because, you know, when we are asked, as we sometimes are, to support community area forum applications, we are aware then of the need. So rather than us prescribe what people want, I think it's really important that we listen on that. I can give an example actually, so I'm quite surprised councillor Wildhurst didn't mention it in his original motion, but I don't think his homework was complete actually. So in Cleeden, in Coldthawd Park in Cleeden, it's a wonderful park, we used to have a bowling green, but it wasn't used. And it's now been turned into, it can only be in Cleeden, a croquet lawn. But they needed assistance to refurbish the backboards. And we've got an active club now who go there, they do the maintenance of the grounds themselves, but we just need, it just needed a bit of support. And it's about being in touch with your communities and about supporting them to, to put in place what we can. So I endorse what councillor Gibson said with regards to that. And I also wonder as well if councillor Thompson begrudges spending in parks seen as, you know, he thinks that the spending of this council is something that is crippling, et cetera. So I just wonder, you know, we have hard choices to make as a council, but we will also listen and respect and try and deliver for our residents for their health and wellbeing, supporting our vulnerable, but also adding lovely additions such as the Happy to Chat benches and last year, finally, last year, people who enjoyed the many free entertainment events that we put in our local parks. And for me, that's how we are delivering our parks. So I personally can't see any point to these motions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Is the amendment agreed? Sorry, councillor Melling, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I must support the last two speakers. I worry about the confusion that seems to be arising between what a park is for and what a sports club is for. I think we've got to be careful about overdevelopment in parks. Parks are for recreation of a very low level, but they seem to be now becoming more and more places where sporting, sporting activities take place. And I think we do have to be very careful about the situation of the park. Councillor Atkinson has mentioned Coldthawd Park, which is surrounded on three, three sides by houses. There was a young lady who thought she would start a bootcamp activity first thing in the morning. And six o'clock, the residents on the three sides of the park were woken up by her ghetto blaster and instructions to the ladies who were taking part in the bootcamp. So I think we do have to be careful. We do have to ensure that parks are used for the purpose for which they were donated in many cases, as has been mentioned. For quietness, for meeting with people, to avoid isolation and to enjoy wildlife and biodiversity. So I do think we have to be careful. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mellon. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Little confused from councillor Melling's statement there about being careful and solitude when the Labour Group itself is promoting a BMX track in the West Park.
Councillor Thompson, can I just remind you, you can only respond at the moment to the amendment to the motion.
I was leading to that. Happy to accept the friendly amendment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is the amendment agreed? Okay, the amendment is not carried, therefore the monitoring, the motion remains unchanged from the original motion. I think we need to conduct a vote. Would we do it by show of hands or do, do you want a named vote? Show of hands?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Elected members, I will ask whether you are for, against or are abstaining from the amendment, the vote on the amendment, and ask that you please indicate clearly by raising your hand. So can all those for the amendment please raise your hand? Thank you. Can all those against the amendment please raise your hand? Thank you. And is there any member abstaining from the vote? So that I have thirty-five members against the amendment and seven members for the amendment. So, Madam Mayor, the vote on the amendment is not carried.
Right, so we go back to the original motion. Councillor Thompson, do you wish to? Sorry. Does any other member wish to ask a question or speak or move another amendment? Okay, councillor Thompson, would you like to reply?
No, happy to take a vote on the original amendment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will now take a vote. Is the motion on the first? Sorry. Is it agreed on the first motion? Does everyone agree on that or not? Or do we need to take a vote? Okay. Can we take a vote by a show of hands then, please? Thank you, Nicola.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So elected members, this time I'm going to ask whether you're for, against or abstaining from the vote on the original motion. So the, the original substantial motion and ask that you please indicate clearly by raising your hand. So can all those members for the motion please raise your hand? Can all those against please raise your hand? And can those members, any abstaining from the vote, please raise your hand? If you'd just give me a second, because I thought the cameraman had his hand at but one point. Okay, so I have three members for the motion, thirty-five members against the motion and four members abstaining from the vote. So the motion is not carried.
Thank you. We move on to motion two, which has been submitted by councillors Gibson, Forman, Atkinson, McEwan, Ellison and Barclay. Councillor Gibson, please present the motion for the ocean.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I couldn't finish my last one. I'll get people finished for us. This motion's about the ocean, South Tyneside Council, the local context. South Tyneside Council is leading the way in tackling climate emergency and has recognised the values of the ocean in both helping us meet our commitments of being carbon neutral by 2030 and protecting our beautiful coastline. We are lead partners on the Stronger Shores Project, which is a pioneer. This uses natural based solutions for our coastal protection and carbon storage and restoring marine habitat in order to protect coastal communities of the north east. We are founding partners of Seascape Scheme, the first of its kind in the UK, which is better connected with local communities, our maritime heritage and proving our ocean liberty and understanding the relationship between people and the ocean and inspiring people and businesses to play their part in protecting it. We work towards sustainable fisheries management as members of the North Eastern IFCA. Our Economic Recovery Plan places the environment and the green growth front and centre of the plans to recreate an inclusive, sustainable economy. We are active in the Tyne Nestry Partnership, which has already delivered one of the projects extending carbon storage salt marsh habitat within the borough with nature based solutions further in the pipeline. South Tyneside Council is leading the way nationally too. We are lead authority of the LGA Coastal SIG, Special Interest Group, champions better coastal policies and funding. champions better coastal policies and funding benefits for England and English coast and its communities. It's natural that we were the ones to be the first authority in the country to declare an urgent need for ocean recovery. Why is this declaration needed? A healthy ocean are fundamental in regulating the global climate system and is essential eye in fighting against climate change. The ocean absorbs about ninety percent of excess heat in the climate system, as well absorbing twenty percent of our annual carbon dioxide emissions generated by human activity. However, the irresponsible and marine explorations pollutions have led to significant degradation and this together with detrimental impact have changed climate and marine ecosystems have led to national and global recognition that the world ocean is in crisis. An unhealthy ocean does not absorb or store carbon as effective as a healthy one, further worsening impact of climate crisis. The UK's government, recently Marine Strategy assessed confirmed that our marine environment is not healthy. An ocean is in crisis and not only bad news for our climate, but also for local fishing, tourism and the industry and health, wellbeing and prosperity of coastal communities. In South Tyneside, like the rest of the planet, we are witnessing the ocean crisis firsthand. Fish stocks continue to collapse from permitted legal and illegal fishing, over poor water quality, impact on seafood and safe bathing. Our beaches are covered in litter with each tide, much of it plastic. Though this is just the tip of the iceberg, the amount of litter, of course, is in the ocean. Marine microplastics have been found in all marine environment and in the bodies of many species, including humans and the species of fish we regularly eat. Our residents are at the frontline of climate change and we are beginning disproportionately impact relative to the inland communities. The impact of climate is crisis on the ocean is profound, from the rising water temperatures and the changes in the ocean chemistry to the sea level rising and the increase in the storminess, including in our local waters. This is changing what seafood is caught locally and accelerating the erosion of the coastline, increasing the risks of infrastructure and property and increasing the risks of flood and storm damage. Urgent action is needed to halt this devastating change and recover our ocean and enable delivery the full range of benefits, including climate regulation, carbon storage, coastal marine habitat, coastal protection and a thriving local economy and a clean recreation and happy, healthy coastline. We must play our part in recovering the health of the ocean. In South Tyneside, this is at the heart of our heritage and our economy. First expertise from South Shields Marine School and Cluster of Marine and Maritime Experts around the Port of Tyne, to the millions of visitors who come to the borough to experience the sight and sound and the feel of the ocean. The ocean can play a vital role in the economy and recovery. We must strive to develop a sustainable, equitable, blue economy that will deliver both recovery and local prosperity. We must ensure that the recovery are embedded in our relevant strategy, decision making, policymaking, budget setting, as well as being considering future strategy plans, including those seeking to improve health and wellbeing for our residents. At present, not everyone has the opportunity to access and enjoy a sea. Even within our borough, there are people of all ages who have never experienced the joys of the ocean. Firsthand experience of the ocean is essential for people who are to motivate to play their part in protecting it, whether through disposal of their litter responsibly, recycling what they can or volunteering the ocean conservation with local organisation. Helping individuals to develop their ocean literacy and understanding the relationship between people and ocean is essential, a part of this motion. As an individual, a collective marine citizenship, promoting demands and an ocean recovery through local and national policy change. Local authorities can not resolve the ocean crisis alone, but we can all play our part in it. The council declares an urgent ocean need for recovery. We recognise the need for ocean recovery to meet our net zero carbon targets. We need zero carbon to recover our ocean. The council pledges to report to full council within twelve months. The action, the projects will all begin the ocean recovery of South Tyneside. Consider the ocean recovery strategic decision plan, budget approach decision by the council, particularly planning regeneration skills in economy policy, aligning with climate change mitigation and adaptation requirements, considering the ocean based solutions in our journey towards carbon neutral, climate resilient future. Promote close working partnership between council and marine management organisation to embed strong links between local.
Councillor, you've got one minute left.
Between local plan and marine plans, ocean recovery. To ensure that the nature based recovery strives to support ocean recovery, the work with partners locally, nationally to increase sustainability and develop sustainability ecosystems, deliver recovery, local prosperity. To grow the ocean literacy as citizen within the borough to ensure pupils given the opportunity to experience the ocean firsthand and all pupils from primary school to strive to promote equality access to the ocean through physical or digital or residential. Work with South Tyneside Marine School to support the college, continue embed marine maritime, blue economy training at the heart of the provision. Subjects available to source priority online portal from the council, the ocean recovery plan, development of literacy opportunity through magazines and pledge. Write to the government asking them for net recovery to ensure fisheries conservation and natural England have resources that need to affect the motion growth and marine protection area to set and force appropriate fishing levels that support economy and deliver the environment's sustainability. To ensure our coastal communities have meaningful say in development of marine policies, to ensure deliberately a sustainable outcome. Appoint a dedicated minister for coastal communities and listen to the marine scientific, including marine social scientists, to update the marine policy and state procedure and national ocean recovery strategy, which will enable recovery of the ecosystem rather than managing downgraded habitat in their richest state. Can I finish?
Councillor, you've had eight minutes. I've been very generous in allowing you to speak for eight minutes when you have five minutes to put your case forward.
Have I?
Yeah, I'm sorry that you have. Is the motion seconded? Councillor Foreman, do you wish to speak now or speak later in the debate?
Yeah, I'll second the motion, but I reserve the right to speak in the debate.
Thank you very much. The motion is now opened to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask a question, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Francis?
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. I'd like to propose an amendment to be inserted between resolutions eight and nine of the original text. So this would essentially become resolution nine and the subsequent resolution become resolution ten. So the text of the amendment is, this council pledges to make South Tyneside Council a single use plastic free authority by the end of twenty twenty two, including an end to the purchase and procurement of single use plastics with the exception of items associated with Covid nineteen, such as PPE and testing kits. Secondly, to end the sale provision of single use plastic products such as bottles, cups, cutlery and drinking straws in council operated buildings. Thirdly, to investigate the possibility of requiring pop up food and drink vendors at council events to avoid single use plastics as a condition of their contract. And fourthly, to work with local businesses to encourage and support the phasing out of single use plastic cups, bottles, cutlery and straws, especially in those businesses closest to our coastline. That's the end of the amended amendment text. In speaking on it, I'd just like to say I'm very pleased to see this come to full council and I'm extremely grateful to colleagues who prepared this, councillor Gibson and colleagues. I've no issue at all with the existing text and I think the resolutions contained in it are excellent. The reason for the amendment is just, anyone who's ever taken part in a beach clean will have seen firsthand the impact that single use plastics have on our coastline and our oceans. And of course, there's an impact further inland too. And we know of the excellent work being done by Surfers Against Sewage and the Sea Shepherds and Plastic Free South Tyneside and of course, existing work that's happening in the council with regard to procurement and so on. It's great to see, although we didn't get to it tonight quite, resolution nine five of the original text calling on national government to strengthen regulations around single use plastics. But we also realise that we're in a position to have a clear, positive impact in our own decisions and actions as a local authority. And we know that local authorities can do this. Similar steps have been taken in councils like Exeter, Brighton and Hove, Bristol, Norwich and Cannock Chase. Given our status as founding partners of the Seascape Scheme, lead partners in Stronger Shores and of course, the lead authority in the LGA's Coastal Special Interest Group, I sincerely hope that we can take these steps to toughen our own stance on single use plastics and protect our vulnerable coastline, seas and oceans. To quote a colleague from the Climate Change Working Group today, there's got to be policies behind it or we're not going to get there. And to quote councillor Gibson just now, we can and must play our part. So this is a simple step that we can take to address one of the factors that is harming our oceans in terms of what we do as a local authority. I would encourage members to please support this amendment tonight.
Thank you councillor Francis. Is the amendment seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Bristol. Do any members wish to speak or ask questions on the amendment to the motion? Councillor Gibson?
Madam mayor, I thank the councillor for his asking. We did have a discussion today and I did raise with him the practicalities of it. We did discuss about procurement. It would be a massive procurement exercise for the council. Achieving, South Tyneside Council puts out what we can achieve. We're not going to promise people what we cannot achieve. And basically, we could not achieve that through procurement. We have procurement exercises which we're in contracts with people for many years. We cannot tell the public sector what kind of, you know, materials they've got to use, plastic forks, knives. Some of the retailers within the borough accommodate it. You've got likes of WeatherSpoons, you've got McDonald's to a point, who give paper straws, cups, yes. But we cannot tell them, what this motion about is about education. Now, we're trying to educate people into what certain people are talking about, what councillor Francis has just mentioned, you know, procurement exercise, one use of plastic. Right, that's fair enough, but that's in the future. I would advise him to speak to the relevant officers, but also he's on the select committee. If he wanted to take another place select committee and ask the chair, could they do possibly look at it, have a report on it, possibly take it up that way? And I think that would be the more cost effective for the council because it is unachievable exercise.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, madam mayor. I don't know if you're aware, but the government is currently carrying out a consultation on banning single use plastics. That consultation closes on the twelfth of February. And if that, if the results of that consultation are as expected, it's likely that the ban on single use plastics will be brought in and made law, certainly in the next parliament, if not in this parliament, and so by twenty twenty three. Looking at the amendment.
Just let the councillor finish, councillor Gibson, and then you can come back.
Looking at the amendment, the first two things are things that we can do as a council. So make sure that South Tyneside Council doesn't purchase any more single plastics by the end of twenty twenty two. I think we can do that quite easily. And end the sale and provision of single use plastic products in our council operated buildings. Again, by the end of twenty two, twenty twenty two, we could do that quite easily. It's not that difficult. We may have contracts, but we can ask for those contracts to be amended so that we're not using single use plastics in, in, we're not being provided with single use plastics. The other two aren't up to us, but it doesn't actually ask us to do it. It asks us to look at seeing whether it's possible to do it. The first one, which is, is it possible to require pop up food and drink vendors at council events to avoid using single use plastics? Of course, it's possible to investigate that possibility. And is it possible, and the second one is to work with local businesses to encourage and support them in phasing it out. Of course, we can work with local businesses to encourage and support them in phasing things out. We can't force them to, but nobody's asking us to. But the government are probably going to force this on us. Would it not be better to be being prepared before it's made a statutory requirement rather than waiting until we're told we have to do it and being behind the curve as opposed to in front of it?
Thank you councillor Hamilton.
So I will support the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Kilgair?
Thank you, madam mayor. I think as chair of the Place Select Committee and councillor Francis is a very valued member of that, I really would like to extend an invitation for him to bring that to our committee. You know, members are able at their leisure to put matters forward for the, you know, the work programme, which is very heavily green focused. I think we need to look at it there, we need to understand where we are. Because I think the problem is, we actually, you know, sitting around this room, every one of us doesn't know where the officers are up to in schemes of this nature. It's a very valuable, you know, kind of piece of information. But I think we need to know more and I'm more than happy to take, you know, a particular interest in this, this matter, as we are with food waste, et cetera, et cetera. And we're also getting an update in the March meeting at the moment, that's how the agenda is running, for the future LGA Coastal SIG update. So we'll get things back in that way. And I think that should include matters of this significance, chair. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kilgair. Councillor Gibson, would you like to respond?
What I was going to say was, it's not legislation at this point. And it is a valuable point, but at the present time, it's not achievable. And the other thing was, it can be looked at by other directors in other ways and it can be addressed. And I'm sure within the next ten year, if this came about, and this is part of the policy, but however changed the green agenda, how we're going down electric cars, I'm sure we'll be changing from certain plastics. So not until it's legislation and the government must hit these massive companies and tell them about their packaging and about their plastics, likes the Amazon, all these boxes and all these plastics and all these different companies. Before that happens, I think needs government legislation before we can even move down that route.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor McCabe?
It's just a point of information, madam mayor. I'm a corporate member of the Institute of Materials, Minerals and Mining. And if I wasn't here tonight, I would have been at a seminar regarding what we're talking about at the moment. If people in this chamber or this terminal park think that there's nothing being done over the last number of years to try and alleviate that problem, then they're sadly mistaken. It's something that companies are working on all of the time. So that's just a point of information. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McCabe. Councillor Flynn?
Yeah, I'll try and phrase my comments in the tight range we've got this discussion. But to pose a question, I wonder if the colleagues around the room realised the influence South Tyneside have in coastal communities? By the mere fact, we have councillor Gibson is the national chair. And I don't believe for one minute that he goes to London and sits there very sheepishly. And I know through Tiny Fire and Rescue, I've liaised with councillor Gibson on lifesaving equipment around the coasts because we're moving away from traditional lifesaving belts. The Place Scrutiny Committee have an outstanding visit to the Port of Tyne. And when Covid allows, that visit to the Port of Tyne can be as broad as we want to make that. And we can get information from the Port of Tyne, how they are handling some of the issues that's in the resolution. I think the resolution's marvellous, but it's part of the influence that councillor Gibson has at national level.
Thank you councillor Flynn. Is the amendment agreed?
Excuse me, madam mayor.
Sorry councillor Thompson?
Thank you, madam mayor. Without detracting from the motion in any way, I think it's quite a straightforward ask. There's only two points of the four which are related to actions. Council buildings to stop the single use of plastic free and the end of sale and provision on council properties. The other two are pretty much educational aspects. I think it's something. I think it's something we could do. I thought councillor Hamilton explained it quite well. It's within our capabilities. It's going to happen and we could be seen as a leader in the region on this aspect. So I would support the amendment today. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor Thompson. Is the amendment agreed? Okay, I shall ask the monitoring officer to carry out a vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Elected members, I will ask whether you're for, against or abstaining from the vote on the amendment and ask that you please indicate clearly by raising your hand. Those members for the amendment? And those members abstaining from the vote? So I think we've got thirty five members against the amendment, six members for the amendment and one member abstaining from the vote, so the amendment is not carried, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. The amendment is not carried, therefore the motion remains unchanged from the original motion. Do any other members wish to ask a question, speak or move another amendment? Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Madam Mayor, I would like to say thank you to councillor Gibson for his motion and I can understand where councillor Francis was coming from, but I'm staying from councillor Francis because three year ago, I'll be perfectly honest with you, did I care about anything like this? No. But three year ago, I had a grandchild and when I see what councillor Gibson's doing now, years ago, I would like to see my grandchild go ahead and start doing this sort of thing now, where I could go to the beach and plodge, go up the rivers and plodge, it was grateful. But at this moment in time, you wouldn't like to take your grandchildren to some of the beaches and some of the rivers to do the plodging. So I would like to say to councillor Gibson, he's absolutely spot on what he's doing and I would support his, I think he's right in what he's doing. But I also think that councillor Gibson has spent a lot of time on this and now I know the rivers are going to be clean, brilliant. Green space, I would like to see that developed a bit more. There's nothing I'd like better than to see my grandchild walking them rivers and seeing the goldfish swim past his feet, the little cuddly toys in the green space. It would be brilliant to see all that again, nothing better. So I'd like to say to councillor Gibson, well done. And for being a councillor, I've come to three year now, this is the first year I can honestly say I've seen a lead member actually bringing this to the table and letting us know what's been going on. I don't know what happened the first two year because we never got anything like this ever before. So I don't know what the last lead member was doing, but councillor Gibson's well up there in my estimations at the minute. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Roberts. Councillor Bristol?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm glad this motion's been tabled tonight as it states, a healthy ocean is fundamental in regulating the global climate system. I'm particularly pleased to see in point two that the council intends to consider ocean recovery in all strategic decisions, plans, budgets and approaches to decisions by the council. So can I infer that this consideration is being extended to investments managed by the council, namely, you guessed it, the Tynan Weir Pension Fund and its investments in fossil fuels. The damage caused by the fossil fuel industry to the oceans is staggering, we all know this, whether by emissions being absorbed by the ocean causing it to become more acidic, by the transportation of fossil fuels which accounts for around fifty percent of global cargo shipping, or by accidents and negligence. For example, the Tynan Weir Pension Fund is around thirty six million invested in one company responsible for spilling over three million barrels of crude oil into the Gulf of Mexico. Again, I'm glad to see this motion, I fully support it, but when we say we must consider the ocean recovery and the wider climate emergency in all decisions, we must really mean all decisions. There's too much at stake not to. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bristol. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, obviously councillor Bristol's quite right in that the fossil fuels for the pension fund have been mentioned before and obviously we will take his comments on board, although it isn't a part of the motion. We will take it on board and take it back to the pension fund. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Councillor Gibson, do you wish to reply to the debate?
Yeah. This is a quick one. One on one.
You've got three minutes, councillor Gibson.
Sorry, I thought you might have heard us anyway. Sorry about that, to apologise. Here in South Tyneside, we witness ocean crisis firsthand. This is bad news for the local economy and it means that the sea cannot store carbon as much as it should. We need to take action now as the tide of crisis is turning. The ocean is at the heart of our heritage and there is a lot of potential to create new jobs and quality jobs within the borough from the sea. This will stop coastal brain drain and increase local prosperity. We need to do this sustainable ways so our blue economy benefits people and nature and our people can depend on it. Unfortunately, there are still people of all ages within our borough who have never seen or had the opportunity to enjoy the North Sea. To access the ocean is important part of health and wellbeing and we also know if people enjoy the sea and the more they like it, the more they'll care about it and this can reduce litter and other antisocial behaviour activities and people will have a positive feel about them once they've been to the coast. We have been leading the way in the region of national through local projects like Seascape, Stronger Shores and the role of the local LGA Coastal SIG. It's natural that we be one of the first local authorities in England, the first local authority in the region to declare, to declare a need for ocean recovery. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to everyone. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor Gibson. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, colleagues. The original motion is agreed. That concludes the business of the Borough Council today. Thank you to those watching from home. Can I please ask that everyone in the public gallery and all councillors please remain seated until Strategy and Democracy officers who will coordinate a safe departure for everyone. Good night and a safe journey home.